Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of Monday, November 25th, 2019. Director App, will you call the roll?
Chairperson Mateo.
I am here.
Commissioner Hannigan?
Here.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
Absent is Commissioner May, but he may be joining us shortly.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing minutes of September 25th, 2019?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
So we have an edit to make. Under attendance, we introduced Commissioner Matthews that evening.
I was wondering about that.
Any other changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't currently have any visitors. Our liaison is at a different meeting tonight. Director App, do you have a village board update?
The special use was approved for 43 East Quincy for the Parks and Rec Department's facility, and the variation for the Combses for the pavilion over their knee wall was also approved. The driveways, the shared gravel driveways has been continued to January, and they have requested that staff move forward with a text amendment regarding gravel driveways. So that is being published in the paper for a hearing next month. So we will be having a meeting on the 16th. That's when our December meeting is. It's the third Monday, I want to say. So we'll be having a public hearing on that text amendment in December, and then that can be on the agenda in January along with the consideration of that gravel driveway variation. So that's kind of my village board update.
Moving on to new, do we have old business to new business, a discussion recommendations to staff on the potential use of planned unit developments?
So I will just make clear from the outset that I'm not necessarily thinking that we're going to have some sort of definitive recommendation or anything after tonight's meeting, but we just kind of wanted to get this process started. RTA is going through the procurement process, so I'm hoping that sometime in January or early February they'll have a consultant selected for our zoning ordinance update. So hopefully if we've kind of had some of these preliminary discussions sort of ahead of time, we can either move forward with that if we're comfortable with it, or we can at least give those recommendations to whoever the consultant is regarding how we want to deal with planned unit developments. But the village president had kind of asked staff to kind of come forward with what sort of things that we could do, or kind of how we compare to some other communities that have been having some redevelopment in their downtowns, and take a look at that and present some of the things that those communities are using compared to us for them to consider. So I brought before them kind of a list of other communities, kind of what their bulk work, some of their bulk requirements are, and whether or not they allow planned unit developments. And most of, actually all the communities that I surveyed do allow for planned unit developments. We do not allow for those in our zoning ordinance. They are a tool that you can use. A lot of times, there can be development types, or there can be situations where you have like infill development and things like that. Where strict application of the zoning code does not necessarily allow for the best use of the land as meeting either our goals or market demands for a piece of property. And so a planned unit development can be a tool where if they go through that process, typically it's treated as a special use. If they go through that process and they show that they're meeting the standards, then they can move forward with the development that doesn't necessarily strictly follow what the zoning ordinance regulations are, as opposed to having to go through a variance process for maybe 10 different variations and a lot of special uses or things like that. It allows a certain level of flexibility in dealing with situations. I think a lot of time you hear about planned unit developments, and it's either greenfield developments, or it's redevelopments for things like golf courses, or just kind of like larger type developments, but then also a tool that can be used for infill type development in communities like ours. And so you see communities like River Forest, or Hinsdale, or Downers Grove using this tool to, or allowing for these in their downtown districts or other districts. And they're getting developments in that are using this tool to create either a mixed-use development, or as we saw in some of the examples, senior housing or multifamily that doesn't necessarily meet the strict letter of the zoning ordinance. So maybe it's a higher dwelling unit, or it's not providing the required parking, or it's looking to have a higher height in order to accommodate retail on the first floor, but still get the number of dwelling units that they need to make the development work. Things like that. So it's a tool that's out there and is not necessarily something that we accommodate in our zoning ordinance. So, you know, I kind of presented this information to the village board. They thought it was worthwhile to take a look at, and they asked that the Planning and Zoning Commission look at this and kind of talk about where we thought this type of zoning or special use would be most appropriate. You know, is it in our downtown? Is it on Harlem Avenue? Is it both? Is it maybe in our multifamily areas? But kind of have that discussion about where do we perhaps want to... We see that there could be some sort of headwinds to some sort of redevelopment happening in a particular area, that this could be a tool that would be appropriate to put out there for developers to be able to use, and that we would get that review. I did provide a link to some of the different PUD ordinances that are out there from the kind of comparable communities, including River Forest and Claritin Hills. So you can, you could kind of see what those ordinances look like and kind of what those thresholds are, like what are the standards that you need to meet in order to qualify to be a planned unit development. It's not like you can just come together with anything and you get to get a planned unit development. There's supposed to be that give and take, that you're getting a better quality product, or it's meeting some sort of substantial goal that the village has, whether it be comprehensive goals, or strategic plan goals, or things like that. So there has to be, in addition to getting a quality project, there is supposed to be some sort of goal or, you know, standards that it's meeting. And so those ordinances kind of have different things like that outlined in them. And then I gave you some examples, some from, some planned unit developments from other communities. I kind of reached out to directors and said, "Hey, can you let me know kind of what planned unit developments you have going on, or ones that are specifically kind of the ones that really stand out to you, is like this was really, you know, kind of the best situation we could have had?" So I provided those in the packet for you as well. River Forest planned unit developments are kind of a newer thing, so these are kind of the newest ones that have happened, and they're only ones that have really happened recently. So they've got a mixed-use development in the downtown, as well as a senior housing development. So those were the two examples that I provided you for that one. The one was in at least partially zoned commercial, which did not allow for senior housing for that particular development. So some of it was, you know, amending what the uses would allow to allow for that type of housing in a commercial district. One of the other examples was from Downers Grove. You had, one was a mixed-use development that contained retail on the first floor and apartment units above, and another one was just an apartment development. And then the other example was from Western Springs. Again, that one was apartments and commercial space. For that one, I didn't have a staff report to look, to provide, or a findings of fact to provide. I wasn't able to find one on the website. But from talking to the director, this was kind of a long vacant area and a kind of a key site that they had wanted to redevelop. And so when this project came along, it assembled some property at a very highly visible intersection that had been kind of derelict for a bit of time. So this development provided for a redevelopment of that area, providing for a mixed-use development, which supported their downtown plan. So those are some of the examples that were in there. Again, I did provide you with a copy of the zoning map, so you can kind of see some of the different zoned areas and kind of where they are. So where kind of our commercial districts are, where our multifamily areas are, and just to kind of get a sense of, you know, different areas that could be looked at as allowing for planned unit developments. Again, they're typically listed as one of the use types under a zoning district, and then under the use standards, then there are a separate chapter, you would have your planned unit development standards that they would have to meet. So they'd be looked at under the context of a special use, but then they would have additional standards that have to be met specifically for that development. So I don't know if you guys had any initial thoughts or any questions, just kind of beginning that discussion about kind of how we feel about this, if there's any additional information you want. And that's about it.
Have you had any developers make initial inquiries about what are, as they look at bigger, some of these bigger developments potentially, have they been asking questions about how much of our zoning they're going to come butting up against, or that they, items of our zoning rules that they thought would be detrimental to their proposals?
Typically, questions come in about parking and building height, and sometimes uses. You know, we've had some inquiries about properties that are perhaps in like the mixed-use periphery area of our downtown, and questions about doing townhomes. Would townhomes be allowed there? So there you have a use that's not necessarily in line with what the district allows for. So whereas it does allow for multifamily, it doesn't allow for attached single-family in that particular zoning district. Questions about building heights, dwelling unit size, things like that are typically ones that come up, but nothing, no projects ever seem to come to fruition, you know, when you talk to them about what the standards are, and whether it's necessarily our standards, or a compilation of available property, and what it might cost to assemble property to be able to do something. You know, at least over the past five years, there have been inquiries fairly regularly, you know, at least a couple a year, but nothing necessarily ever seems to come to fruition.
When you say mixed use, what areas, and you mentioned townhomes, what areas specifically you're talking about on the zoning map?
So that would be like along Quincy.
Okay.
Did River Forest indicate their impression as to whether having planned unit developments really made a difference with developer interest?
They seem to be fairly happy with the planned unit development process. So I think they felt it was a good tool, that there was already interest, but I think it provided them a tool to make the process a little bit friendly, doesn't seem like the right word, but that there was, there was a little bit more negotiation that could happen at a staff level and at a commission level to get the best quality product that they wanted. So, and allowed for that opportunity for resident input, or actually technically, I think we're kind of required that resident input with having neighbor meetings and providing the results of those meetings to their review board as they were making those considerations. So kind of building that into the process as well. So requiring those initial meetings with neighbors, so that that feedback isn't happening for its first time at the public hearing. You know, they're having that discussion ahead of time, and they're able to gauge kind of what the feedback from the neighbors and what they can address initially before they get too far down the process.
Was it River Forest that did, did they have two separate projects, the senior, a senior living facility?
Right.
And then the one at Lakeland Lathrow?
Right.
Which is not near, I don't even know if they've started on that one.
I think they've just started demolition and some site work out there.
And was the senior, what's the timing for the senior facility?
They're a little bit further along, but I don't think they've actually started putting up walls yet. I think they've got everything down, and they're working on kind of utilities and infrastructure at this point, so.
In the materials you sent us, which, you know, I didn't read word for word, but I saw the information of what the, whatever they call it, the subsidiary board did, but not the village board. Did the village, were the village boards decisions on those two projects?
The village board approved both of those, and I believe the one where they had some questions about the, how to deal with certain uses, I think they ended up going with what the compromise that the developer has for.
Was it unanimous, do you remember, or was it four to two, like the lower board was, or was it a split decision?
I think it was a split decision.
Split decision, okay. I'm a little curious on those exactly. Again, I couldn't really tell that well. But number one, what were the developers asking for that they couldn't, could not at all have gotten under the current zoning? And number two, what did the village get in each of those projects? I can kind of maybe parse out what the developers got, which is fewer parking spaces and less setback and things like that, but it was not totally clear to me what the village got, other than just getting properties developed.
Right. So I think for their, their finding, their major finding was it was fulfilling a development goal for the village and dealing with a more blighted property. I think one of the biggest concerns with that, you know, in addition to kind of heightened density, the big issue seemed to be parking and how parking was going to be dealt with. For the senior housing, again, they kind of fell back on their comprehensive plan. You had kind of a vacant area, you know, a vacant bank property, and some single-family homes that were assembled to do this, but they felt it was meeting some of their comprehensive plan goals with providing for senior housing, additional density in commercial area. So although it didn't provide the retail, it was meeting some of the other needs that they were putting out there. And I think they were hoping for additional landscaping and things like that, and some of those screening things, and being able to push the building up towards the street rather than being set back, provided for keeping that more pedestrian type development that they were hoping to keep.
Okay, sort of a vision and consistency with their comprehensive plan. So did they develop a comprehensive plan as part of this PUD process?
I think they already had the comprehensive plan in place, and then they adopted a PUD ordinance.
Okay.
Paul, please.
As we embark on this, I definitely think we should be setting some, at least initial parameters around things like parking and density and... I mean, I'm struggling with how much, how we shape this, and I know Brookfield has kind of form-based, is this correct, Sonia? A form-based code that they're looking at, and I don't really know, does that go into a planned unit development? Do we set big parameters that a developer can then look at and say, "I can, I can start proposing something within this," or is it a lot more back and forth and negotiation?
I think there's a bit more negotiation. Brookfield does have a form-based code, and they do allow for planned unit developments, even within the district where they have the more form-based code. So in their, you know, their downtown station area plan. So they have that in place. Typically, you know, they, the developer's going to have the site they're looking at, and whatever they see is kind of their red flag constraints for working with that. So typically, your planned unit development is going to kind of start with that concept plan that comes to you. This is what we'd like to do, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And they bring that to the village, and whether they're having that, you know, kind of initial informal meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission or with staff, you're beginning that discussion. So if they're saying our initial problem is, is say, "We can't meet the parking needs of a multifamily development and still provide you with a, you know, full thing of retail on the first floor, because we need to be able to provide parking on the first floor for our tenants or for our condo owners." You know, that might be the parameter that they're coming out with first. This is the first hurdle we have to get over. We need, we feel that for our product, we need to have this many parking spaces to have this many units, and that means we can't do retail on the first floor, period. Well, is that a nonstarter for us? And we can say, "Well, that's a nonstarter for us. This is our retail core, and we need to have, we don't want to lose commercial space. You need to provide some commercial space." So then, does that compromise? Then they can go back and say, "Okay, what can we do to accommodate some commercial space and still meet our parking?" So it provides for that kind of conversation to be happening as kind of part of the process. But before they get too far down the development road of investing the money in the engineering and the architecture, they're starting to have those conversations with the commission or the board and staff to begin that process. Not to say that that doesn't happen with strict, you know, somebody that's just going to follow the zoning code, but I think if somebody's looking for what would be a big variance, knowing that there's a process that can allow for some flexibility without having to meet that hardship standard, makes it a little bit more palatable to go through the process. And to know that there's something that the village wants that maybe they can be able to provide.
So part of this, it appears, and this is, this might be a dumb question, but as we get to this idea of they're looking to do something outside of conventional, our setbacks and our parking requirements, and unit sizes, whatever those are, that they're looking for a variance from those things. But they can't really show hardship because they get, they're not in a hardship situation, but they're still looking for that variance. So this gives us the opportunity to say, "We can work with you, and you can propose things that maybe the setback doesn't quite work, but you need that to fit all your parking in." I'm just making something up.
Right.
So they don't have to call it a hardship, and we can still allow it to happen, but then it's, how does this?
It's within the context of whatever parameters that we put into, or the kind of the conditions of a planned unit development. So is it meeting your comprehensive plan goals? Is it, you know, protecting environmental or, you know, historic architecture, or, you know, different goals that you have? So those are the kind of things that you build into the ordinance proper for your planned unit developments, that then you use as, like you have your standards for variance, you have your standards for planned unit development, and you can kind of look at it through that lens, meeting those, those kind of, whatever parameters you kind of set out as part of that.
In some of the materials you provided, Sonia, I think it was for River Forest?
Okay.
Where there was the DBD, or whatever it was called, that had considered things. There was a table, and it showed what was required and what was requested, and the SDAs, which was like the variances.
It's like the variances, right.
Right. Was that like a change from the PUD requirements, or a change from the basic zoning requirements?
That was a change from the basic zoning requirements.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So the PUD sort of maybe said, like, within this percentage, you can give an allowance or something? Is that how it works?
Something along those, I mean, the...
The ordinance don't get very specific about parking or height. It's more, "Do you meet our comprehensive plan? Do you meet stormwater management, landscaping, utilities, safety, lighting, egress?" Without having numbers with it, at least not the ordinances that I saw.
Right.
Do you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
But they certainly can have numbers.
Yeah.
Where you could build standards that say, "We won't allow more than a 25% variation as part of this process."
Right.
To put some sort of limitations on that.
Did you include the ordinances in the packet?
I had the link, it was getting to be really lengthy.
Okay.
So I put the link to the village board packet, and the village board packet had the ordinances from River Forest and...
Okay, so those are connected?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna look at those. That's another 75 pages.
I'm sorry.
So we don't really have a comprehensive plan?
The only one we have would be for the downtown. So our CBD is kind of our comprehensive plan for the downtown, the CMAP CBD plan.
So as part of this process, we may need to develop a comprehensive plan, would you think? Does anyone here think that would be necessary? If we're gonna say this is consistent, we have to have something to be consistent with, so.
You know, we can refer to CMAP, and we can also put into the ordinance what our goals are.
I was gonna say, can you, I don't know where I have it right now, but can you provide a link to the CMAP plan?
Because the village of River Forest adopted CMAP.
Right.
I haven't looked at it lately.
So additionally, you have, you know, is, in your kind of your intent and purpose statement of that ordinance is where perhaps you can get into a little bit more of what you're looking for, if we're looking at maybe areas outside of the central district, so.
Yeah, these, not all these ordinances refer to a particular plan. Like it was Western Springs or Downers Grove that identified, was it Galaxy, some clusters where they wanted to have future development?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have that, but I don't think we need to.
And we could, so we could address different areas in different ways. Like, let's say if we wanted to address, you know, the area over Forest Avenue and all those multi-unit, that could be addressed in a separate way than the CBD, in a separate way than Harlem? Or not?
I don't think you'd come up with separate PUD ordinances for each of those, but I think you'd have to be looking at the context of what your goals and objectives are for those different areas, and try to incorporate that into...
Into one PUD.
Into the, you know, into the standards.
Mm-hmm. And is there some kind of a state law about these things? That there's like a basic minimum that you have to meet?
Not exactly. I think there's kind of, kind of become a, you'll notice some commonalities, that those have kind of become the established ones. It has been established that they are consistent with being special uses, so they're typically treated as special uses. Some communities will also call it a rezoning, sort of with planned developments. So you rezone to a planned development, and whatever that ordinance is, is quote unquote, the zoning ordinance for that, that district, basically. But that can also be, you know, that's part of the planned unit development when it says a special use as well. That ordinance that approves the preliminary PUD or the final PUD is the governing document for that development in that area. And if modifications end up needing to happen, similar to kind of like a site plan, if it's a minor modification, it might not necessarily have to go through a public hearing process to change things. It might just be able to come to the plan commission to get the blessing on, you know, a small change. If it's a more major modification, then it would probably have to do an amendment and go through the process all over again.
So would you say that developers are more comfortable with the PUD process than they are with, like, our process?
I would say yes.
Okay.
I think there's a certain, there's a hurdle with a variance, especially if there's a lot of them, that makes developers uncomfortable going forward with a development on a parcel. I mean, in some cases, it's fairly easy to show what your hardship is, you know, when you're dealing with kind of some legacy sites or things like that, that have items that you just can't really work around. Then perhaps, you know, it's easy to show that hardship. But with other sites, you know, sometimes it comes down, a lot of times it comes down to money. And that can't be a hardship per our ordinance. So that, that can be the hiccup a lot of times with developments with that variance process. A lot of times, it comes down to the economics.
So districts. Would we want the PUD to apply to both business districts?
I could see it appropriate in really anything other than the single-family districts.
I agree with you.
I agree with that, yeah. Well, that was easy.
Well, I'd say, did you, I'm sorry, did you just say the single-family districts?
Anything but the single-family.
Okay, yeah.
So in the multifamily, potentially, it could be redeveloped with higher density?
Right. Well, I think about it in this context, you have parking requirements for multifamily, and you have a lot of existing multifamily out there that provides no parking at all. Anything that gets developed now is going to want to be able to provide parking, but there might be site constraints, you know, on there that make it difficult for them to be able to provide what our parking requirements are. There might be site constraints just with landscaping or screening. There might be site constraints just with landscaping or screening if they were to be doing some redevelopment, or perhaps orientation of the building, trying to deal with either alleys or trying to make things look, have that best kind of street presentation with what the existing housing stock is on that street, that may cause them to make different decisions on the site and where they want to, to put the building, provide the parking, dumpster enclosures, like those kind of things that might dictate how tall they might need to go, how much parking they can provide, if there's exterior treatments that they want to do that maybe make it taller, or we have impervious, we have impervious standards and building coverage standards in our, you know, our residential districts that are accommodating, but maybe don't necessarily work with a higher density development that might want to happen. So there's a lot of moving targets in there. There's, you know, depending on the size of it, is it going to be MWRD, stormwater requirements that may start clicking in that, that might give them pause to how they can necessarily work everything on a site and provide everything on a site that they, they need to provide.
Any of these, pods, I guess, term-
PUDs.
PUDs. Yeah, so that's, that's what the pause was. Best approach. Are you also allowed to, in any way, regulate the type of business you might see coming in?
You can, to a degree. I think you definitely can. You can say in this development, maybe we want to limit how much office or service use, or maybe we want to restrict how much restaurant or outdoor dining, kind of depending on, on what could be the concerns. That certainly can be part of that, that negotiated process. And I think that was somewhat part of the process that River Forest was coming up against with that Lake and Lathrop development. Some of it was what the different types of uses were, that they were targeting, that they thought this was a good market for, but the village's code either necessarily didn't allow them, kind of like the quick-service dining was something that wasn't necessarily, that was kind of considered fast food. And they're saying, well, it's really kind of different than fast food, but it would be regulated fast food. And that was something that was either a special use or not permitted in the down, on the downtown area. So they kind of had to go through some of those, that negotiation process on what would be considered this, what were the parameters around that, what would be the hours of operation for those things like that, or things that were discussed as part of that PUD process.
In developing the new PUD ordinance, or whatever it is, how many public hearings are typically envisioned as part of that process?
Public hearing?
Right, maybe to get, I'm, I'm thinking of to get general community input and then maybe an approval or something like that. I mean, is it-
So I think-
Or is it just community, like, information sessions and input sessions?
So I think there's some communities that will require them to have at least one, you know, neighbor meeting on their own.
Well, I mean, like, before we write-
Oh, before-
The new PUD language.
For us.
Yes, for us.
Technically, only one public hearing is required. If it takes you three meetings to get through your public hearing, you know, that is, that is what it is. But it could take as long as you want to get to.
I'm just thinking, it's a significant change. And although we just mentioned how it could be anywhere but the single-family, I'm not sure that, I would not, sitting here right now, feel comfortable, like, doing wholesale changes to the village, you know, with like four different areas all in one, and, you know, all at one go, because we're totally neophytes to this process. So I'm just thinking about how much public discussion there would be involved in this and how much change of real estate, you know, area would be involved.
Right. So I think the village board initially is just kind of wanting the commission's feedback and kind of what your concerns are, what your hopes would be, if you thought that there was, you know, maybe more some caution about the multifamily areas versus the commercial areas or one commercial area over another, trying to get that feedback. And then from there, you know, they'll decide if we want to move forward with public hearing in advance of our zoning ordinance update, or if just those general comments will go to the consultant and it'll all kind of be wrapped in, into one, so.
I think with, just kind of with the commercial areas, one thing that came up when we talked about the doctors off, the doctor building on Ogden, where that had been discussed going completely to residential, and that was ultimately rejected by the village board. And so as we think about perhaps putting PUDs in our commercial areas, that commercial first-floor requirements are part of it. And I realize that that sometimes is a little bit of a, sometimes that's a little bit of a struggle for the developers because they don't know if they can find those renters to fill those spaces, but if we're going to be concerned about maintaining walkability and streetscapes and just general look and feel, that that has to be part of it, where you can't come into a commercial district and just arbitrarily make it all residential.
Well, and again, with the standards, you can use the standards as, this isn't furthering our goal of a more active downtown or commercial area or pedestrian-oriented, you know, development or transit-oriented development, because it is not providing, you know, this retail and you can say, you know, we're rejecting this proposal on its face because that is a major goal of the, you know, goal of the village.
But I think when the board is asking for our input is, we're, that one of the goals of a PUD would be to defend those commercial, potential commercial uses or walkability, streetscape. You saw that with that, that River Forest development. The, the multifamily, the green on our map, I'm not quite sure how well a PUD even fits within those, because those are already multifamily, so how much denser can you go? Now, I admit that a lot, a number of those, especially in the area of Lincoln Avenue, it's really a mix of multifamily and single-family. They're currently single-family uses, so if somebody comes in and buys one of those single-family houses and proposes a multifamily development, I'm not sure that you even need a PUD, because you would still fit within the zone.
But one thing I wondered, Sonja mentioned parking, I wonder if some of those multifamily buildings in that area or other areas, everyone would shy away from redeveloping because they'd have to provide parking now. Presumably, when those were built, they didn't have to provide onsite parking. And so perhaps the PUD could allow some leniency on that, but as compared to what the strict requirements of our zoning code are. I'm assuming that's kind of what this could be useful for. Some of those buildings are quite old. I don't know what they look like inside. Maybe someone would want to come in and build something new and, you know, obviously new with more amenities, all that stuff. But if they have to comply with parking requirements or other requirements, that would be a non-starter.
So some of the ordinance, ordinances require providing a public benefit to the village, a village. And some talk about common open space, protected open space, community amenities, but those would be spaces within the development, not off-site, correct? Is that your understanding of it?
Typically. Sometimes you can use it that they, you know, provide monetarily towards, like if the village has a project or an area that they're looking at. Some communities have used that as a tool to get sort of a monetary donation towards another type of improvement, whether it be a park or public parking structure, things like that, so.
Yeah, it's usually not fill up the entire property, build a park space as part of it, or provide your off-site parking. That's, that's more, like you said, the trade-off where you, you pay to put that someplace else.
But realistically, that wouldn't seem to be an option almost anywhere in the village. I mean, I would suspect, or at least building greenfields on the, the site itself. You noted earlier that these are used a lot for, you know, golf course redevelopments or, you know, industrial areas where there's room.
Right.
I mean, I can think of very few places where a development, if they wanted to make money, would, would have room to create like a park or a green space. Although I suppose it would give you leverage or landscape issues, which would be good.
Landscape issues, maybe more of a public plaza or, you know, that kind of space that could be provided as part of the development that will be accessible to the public, even though it's on private property.
Have you ever seen any relationship with permeability, like repaving alleys or whatever? Since we couldn't do green space, new green space, doing something in that regard as a trade-off? Something we couldn't otherwise afford in the village?
Some of the other things that, I won't say that they get credit for, but preserving environmental features, preservation of historic features, the open space we talked about, sustainable practices and LEED certification. So these are things that I assume if they're incorporating that into their project, they might be more likely to get approved, even if they're exceeding building height or not meeting parking requirements. Bike share, public car facilities. One of the villages talked about minimum size of a project. Do you think that's worth us considering, given the spaces that we're talking about?
I don't see that really fitting in Riverside, given the small size of many of our lots.
And then I think the last ordinance you included had design features, like facades and caps. Do we want to go there? Or suggest we go there?
It kind of goes with the form-based. I, I don't know. I don't want this to be a debate about architectural features. But that's, and I say that and then I come back and say it, it ends up being really important for look and feel. So, I mean, you look at some of what our rules are on exterior features, like we wouldn't, we didn't allow CMUs or oversized bricks or, are we still going to retain those rules?
Or do we want them to be even more restrictive? We're talking about a large new building and maybe we don't want certain types of materials used on a huge, you know, three, four-story facade? I don't know the answer to that. But certainly, if you look at some new developments, they're using what looked like fairly cheap materials. So I think there might be a place for looking more about at material use in these types of developments.
The sweet spot for these developments, for developers right now, is that four-story type 5B construction where it's all wood frame, it's built out of quickcrete, it's got an NFPA 13R system to it. They can come in and they can do a pro forma and run a residential for the top three floors, retail on the bottom floor. Usually you end up doing brick for the bottom floor, stone, and then some sort of Swiss pearl or like a gypcrete-type system on the exterior face. And that's, that's how they can make the most amount of money and produce something that looks halfway decent and be able to build it fairly quickly. So I think that's, that's what you've got to kind of groove this towards if, if you want to make it friendly in the suburban area right now. And some of the examples that you sent, they're very much that. They're the, the four-story that take the step back and do the metal frame on the outside. So that's, that's kind of the direction you, you want to steer towards.
All for looking at the architectural features and the building materials for a proposed development, but I think it gets really sticky when you start trying to specify what you do and don't allow in code with those, because no matter how good our intentions are, there's going to be someone who comes up with a really hideous way to meet the exact specifications of a code requirement. But whereas if it's part of a planned development where you have a menu of things we would like to see, then that does give us more flexibility to really look on things on a case-by-case basis, what's appropriate at a particular site for a particular building, without having to, you know, really grant other variation for ourselves for a particular type of building material that might, we might be okay with.
And when I've worked with these in the past, sometimes the ones that have the most restrictions tend to say things like, must have 25% windows or glazing on your facade, must have 30% of this type of menu materials, so it's gonna be maybe a masonry and maybe 30% of maybe a metal siding. So they'll give you kind of a, a menu listing of try and mix up your facades this way, but not in a way that makes it completely restrictive of you have to use this or this here.
I've seen that in form-based codes as well.
Yes.
Even outside of, of just a planned development. So that's also something that can be looked at as part of, the zoning ordinance update is kind of taking a look at our materials list and how it can be applied within the districts as well.
So I think I'm hearing in the PUD, leave it out, but perhaps consider it for the new zoning update?
I don't think there's anything wrong with having it in there either, even for PUDs. But again, not having it be extremely rigid, you know, but just saying that there's still an expectation that the first floor is going to have, you know, whether it be the glazing or whether it be, has to be a brick or stone, no CMUs, you know, some of those, you know, different types of things. There's, I think that's completely appropriate to have kind of within there.
And ultimately, preservation would also be looking at these case-by-case if we get any, right? PUDs?
That's up to you guys to decide.
I think they have to. I don't think we can legitimately live in Riverside and not give them a say in some of this.
I can't remember, do they, the-
They typically review any zoning text amendments and anything that has to do with a local landmarked property. So if this were to be in, you know, if, if there's an addition going on a landmarked property that required a variance or a site plan review, it would have to go to the preservation commission for their review and approval. Any amendments we make to our zoning code will have to go to the preservation commission for their review and approval on its impact on our national landmark designation and impact on the general plan of Riverside. But they don't necessarily weigh in on each individual development that would happen in town.
They do have a say in demolitions though, right?
Correct.
Of all buildings or?
All residential buildings.
Contributing to our steps? Which is pretty much all. Commissioner Fellati, or any thoughts?
No, I mean, I think that we might want to have preservation review of PUD. So that would be part of the review process. I think it would be appropriate, as long as it's within the historic district.
Is CBD considered within the district?
Yeah, it is. The only part that's outside of our current designation is west of First Avenue, although the amendment, which has not been formalized by the National Park Service yet, would include the fourth division.
How did that happen?
I think, I'm not sure. I think First Avenue is kind of like the cutoff for the, the original designation. And I think most of the plan kind of basically went up to the river, a little bit over, and that was kind of the focus of it. So that's kind of where they originally took it. But in the revision, it's looking at incorporating the entirety of, of our corporate boundaries to be within the landmark district, but that has not been adopted by the National Park Service yet.
Is that in front of the National Park Service right now?
It's been in front of the National Park Service for about 10 years, so.
Okay. I, I didn't, I had no idea that a portion of the village somehow did not fit within the historic.
So we- So we were asked, my understanding is, is because we were a very early district, there were certain application standards, whatever, that were not required back then. So as that whole process has evolved, there's an application and findings and procedure to become a landmark district. And so they asked the village to submit a quote unquote "application", so a revised application, really, the only application we've probably ever done to be presented to them. The woman who was in charge of that case retired and it was supposed to be handed off to somebody. Or she said even in her retirement, she would see it through to the end. And that didn't happen so much. So it kind of got brought back up in 2017 and they're kind of restarting that process and looking at the materials. So, but I've not heard that a formal ruling has been made. But my understanding is that things through this current administration are not necessarily moving as fast in regards to landmark designations and things like that, so.
Understood.
Commissioner Matthews, what are your thoughts on having preservation review all PUD applications?
I mean, I'm kind of on the spot about that. But I mean, it seems to me, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, why don't we just all ponder that for a little bit? Because we're going to be talking about this for more meetings.
Because I'd really like to know. I don't know that much about what preservation's purview actually is. So before I, I'd rather, you know, read a bit about them.
So something to mull over.
Do you need more from us right now?
Is there any additional information you guys would like me to provide or?
No, just knowing that the links are, the information is in the village board packet is sufficient. I think definitely height. Right now, I'm just sitting at about four stories. And that was before Sean noted the ideal for a developer.
Well, again, height doesn't go into the ordinance.
Well...
In the ordinances that we've seen, height doesn't go in there.
And the table is...
It's in the table that was presented.
Oh, that was additional information that was looking at is kind of what, where does the building height in the downtown areas or commercial districts fall in comparison to ours and in these other communities? So some of them are right around ours and some of them provide a little bit more height.
I could see putting it in the PUD because that is one of the things that developers can be looking at when they start doing their pro formas is how many units can they jam into a building? And height means...
But it's in the underlying zoning.
But what does our commercial district provide, commercial zoning provide for?
Three stories.
So we might want it to be, so then that would mean, I guess, an alter in the underlying zoning ordinance if you don't put it in the PUD. I don't know which is more, I mean, I guess that's one thing to think about.
So that was the other consideration, but there seemed to be a little bit less enthusiasm on moving forward with straight changing building height.
Right, so would it be more typical to put it in the PUD and not in the overall zoning?
So.
That's an issue, I assume.
I think where I'm more going with this is don't come at us with a proposal to put six stories up. I don't even, a developer shouldn't even bother trying with that.
So and maybe that comes into, you know, no more than a 20% increase or 10% increase in the overall height or something along those lines could be incorporated.
Something else we can mull over?
So and does the maximum height differ? You know, do we really sold on only three stories in the multifamily area? Or will we be willing to see four stories there? On Harlem Avenue, is it four stories or would five stories or six stories be okay on Harlem Avenue? Is it different for Harlem Avenue, commercial versus the Harlem Avenue? Well, I guess not technically Harlem Avenue, but the transitional commercial area of the B1 where it kind of comes in onto like Burlington or Quincy or, you know, the random B1 TC we have over at Cowley and Burlington. You know, what does, you know, what's the, you know, what's your limit in those areas as well? And again, so I think it's helpful to have the map too to kind of see where those.
And it might be different where Bank of America is versus where Title Max is in terms of height.
I want to say no because virtually all of these locations we're talking about back up to a single family zoning. There are very few, if any, of the commercials that don't back up to single family.
Just those that back up to the railroad.
And they back up to the railroad and even there, I think too high starts to look really out of place with regards to the rest of the area.
If we wanted to start talking about radically changing the allowable heights, I think that's more appropriate to consider as part of a zoning ordinance revision versus a plan development ordinance. Because I see the plan development ordinance as a tool for allowing us to be more flexible within reason.
Right.
Which is why I think it's a good idea to have some sort of cap on how far from code we'd be willing to go so that we're not completely changing everything and doing a de facto rezoning of a property through the plan development process. But by being clear about what we are willing to give and take on, I think that gets us where we're trying to go. And if there is some reason to put a six story building on a particular property, then that's great. They can come forth and ask for a variation for that. But that's not something that would necessarily say, well, that's okay if you give us some more landscaping or something like that.
And I haven't heard any discussion on Ogden, but I would think Ogden would be another area that we would want to consider.
Right, yeah, the Harlem, that B1C does wrap around on to Ogden, almost up to, I think there's a house right on the corner of Lionel and Ogden. And that is owned, I believe, R3.
Looks like R1.
No, it's R.
It's R...
R2, sorry. Zone R2. But the rest of that kind of area is single family there.
Is part of the CMAP project looking at zoning of areas and properties? One of the things I put in there was exploring whether some of the district boundaries needed to be adjusted in light of some of the recommendations, whether it be from the RTA slash PACE's Harlem Avenue Corridor Plan or even within our Central Business District Plan. Because the plan kind of looked outside of, you know, like the area that it looked at kind of went all the way to Cowley and it went, you know, all the way to almost to Groveland, kind of along Forest, kind of looking at that greater area of the downtown, not necessarily just the B2 boundaries specific in that. So is there some, you know, areas that we need to be looking at that, you know, does maybe the retail core go a little farther? And then maybe the mixed use periphery goes a little bit further east or west then? Or does there, you know, looking at perhaps some map changes that may need to happen as we look at trying to realize some of the goals that are in different plans? So maybe not necessarily looking at the R3 specific, but kind of looking, you know, if we want to, we feel it's important. I'm sure that's, you know, can be part of what they're looking at broadly. Again, with trying to have density that supports the downtown. Just the downtown or, I mean, I feel like...
On Harlem Avenue too.
Right.
And Ogden.
And Ogden, right.
And Ogden.
It just looks, sometimes looking at the map, it almost looks like we zoned it based on what was being, what the existing use was as opposed to what the best, foremost sensible use would be.
I would kind of agree.
So it'd be nice to take a look at it from that standpoint. All right, well, there's our first discussion. For the next meeting, as I said, it's December 16. We will have the public hearing for the text amendment on there. We will also have a public hearing for a special use for Blythe Park Elementary School for expanding, they're doing a classroom addition onto there. So they need an expansion of their special use approved. So it'll be before us.
What is the text amendment?
For the gravel driveways.
Okay.
So you'll provide us a draft before the next meeting to... So the village board was fairly, fairly specific about what they wanted to see in there and specifically addressing when gravel driveways would need to not be gravel driveways anymore. So kind of making some of those clarifications that an existing gravel driveway, unless it's associated with a local landmark, would not be able to be maintained in perpetuity, that they have to come to one of the other materials. So the text amendment kind of takes, you know, some of that ambiguity and circular talk that was within the code and tries to clarify that and move some things around. But the board's direction seemed to be that they did want there to be a hard endpoint where there are not gravel driveways in town anymore, so.
A hard endpoint in terms of timeline, i.e. number of years? Or in terms of when a property is sold?
In number of years, not when a property is sold. So that by, you know, 2022, there would be no more gravel driveways in town or whatever the final date is that's agreed upon.
But we can still suggest changes to this text.
Yes, yeah.
So you're only looking at that segment of the code, whatever it is, that discussed the phase out of gravel driveways?
So we're looking at the driveway section itself where it talks about permitted driveway materials and existing gravel driveways, as well as the non-conforming section where it talks about existing non-conforming gravel driveways.
So are you considering materials as well? Or it's going to be the same materials as far as you can tell right now that are allowed?
Right, with gravel.
Grasscrete, whatever that is. Has anyone ever asked for a grasscrete driveway, as far as you know?
Not since I've been here.
I'm wondering if anyone even puts them in.
Somebody's inquired, but they didn't end up doing it, so.
I wonder if anyone even provides that service. I have no idea.
They do.
They do, okay.
It's not necessarily used in a residential application as much as it's used in, you know, other situations.
Like what they do?
Parking lots.
Parking lots, okay, grasscrete parking lots.
They tend to be cost prohibitive for most homeowners, I think.
Yeah.
They cost more than, say, just throwing down concrete or asphalt?
Yes, because you have a whole drainage system built into it.
So it's like permeable pavers, basically? It's similar to that process?
Yeah.
Anything else? Lushen to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Fall in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. We'll see you on 16th.